Okay, thank you everyone for being here tonight. We're gonna start with the public comment period and the remember the rules of decorum. Please refrain from cheering and jeering or whatever, that's the audience. You have three minutes each speaker. Please identify yourselves, state your name and address. And again, no attacks, remember decorum, please. Treat others with respect as you wish to be treated, okay? So first off we have-
Madam Mayor, if I could before we start, can I recognize we have some young people here?
Of course.
And I know they're gonna have to leave early.
Okay.
So we have some young people here from the Brentwood Boys and Girls Club.
Oh wow.
And if they could please stand. And I just wanna thank you all for... So the club and the League of Women, Junior League of Women, brought them out here tonight and I wanna thank them all for what they're doing, their service and young people coming to learn about government and what we do and how we operate and I pray that we all show them the positive of government. So, that's all I wanted to say, Madam Mayor.
That's a nice way to start a meeting. Thank you for being here. Okay, first we have Ryan Parker, who would like to speak. Three minutes?
Okay, Ryan Parker, 626 Drew Street. Thank you Mayor, Council. I am a North Carolina native and 23-year citizen of Raleigh and resident of the East Mordeke neighborhood and arise before you tonight in order to address the Council's February 4th decision to dismantle the Citizens Advisory Council, also known as the CACs. While I do not disagree that some of the Citizen Advisory Councils are unrepresentative of the communities that they claim to serve, I disagree with the way in which this decision was implemented. Like many of your constituents, I learned about this unilateral decision in my social media feed from an article written in the Independent Weekly on February 4th, the day that the Council voted to disband the CACs. And I rise before you tonight to air grievance on my behalf of myself and thousands of others at Raleigh who are alarmed at the egregious lack of transparency in which this decision was made. Now according to the article, this Council dismantled the city's nearly 50-year-old Citizen Advisory Council, excuse me, with no written notice of the vote on the Council's agenda, no public comment on the matter, two voices of opposition on the Council, one of which had no knowledge of this prior. The Council informed the media under embargo and whipped together the votes in secrecy. One Council member said on the record that they quote "didn't wanna fight." "We don't need a fight." It is my feeling that the prerogative of the Council to decide what is worth fighting is it should be in the public interest. That decision rests with the citizens of Raleigh. Now the Council touts that in a survey, 99% of people never heard of CACs. That is a failure of the system, the division of community engagement and city officials to promote the only system in which the citizens have a true voice. It's not the fault of the CACs. Of course, Council members claim that dismantling the CACs is necessary to free up the funds, to hire the consultant for new community engagement efforts, but how can you reallocate public funds without public comment, without notice of intent? What sort of engagement program do we have in the interim? None. This clandestine move was taken in order to intentionally exclude the voices of the citizens of Raleigh. It lacks transparency. It is a breach of public trust. It's a violation of the sanctity of the offices that you have sworn to uphold. Creates an air of distrust and secrecy, a toxic air in which democracy dies along with the voices of the citizens of Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Tommy Walz. If we could have Zach Brady, Steph Mendel, Richard Johnson, and Octavia Rainey line up in front so we can get, move this along quickly. And your name is up here, so as people come to speak, if you'll line up and then, so we don't have a lot of time in between each speaker. Thank you.
My name is Tommy Walz. I live at Herringbone, 90 Herringbone Drive in Franklinton, North Carolina. I've been coming here with my friends for over a year now. I wanna share a story because it's time again where politics takes center stage. I wanna share a story. It's, let's say someone gains political power in North Carolina and they pass a law that every family that gives up their children from ages one to five can receive a stipend of $20,000. The law also would state that these children will be given to the God of Baal to ensure good fortune upon the state of North Carolina. The sacrifice ritual would consist of a child being laid on a glowing set of metal arms outstretched like some demonic death nanny. You say, Tommy, you're crazy, no people alive would ever do this. We're all civilized people. We're too civilized to do that. I wanna share two things here. I wanna read a section of scripture from 2 Kings 17:17, then I wanna talk about a group of civilized people. 2 Kings 17:17 says this, "Then they made their sons and daughters pass through the fire and practiced divination, enchantments, and sold themselves to do evil in the sight of the Lord, provoking him." They "made" their sons and daughters walk through the fire. "They" the personal pronoun and the verb "made." So here's the group of civilized people I'd like to talk about. This group is outstanding, law-abiding citizens. They're making their children because of the power they have, their little boy or little girl, to stay in a room with a person that's coming to kill them. They have, the children have no way out, even the law of the land has turned their backs on them. These persons enter the room, they dismantle their children, piece by piece, dismantle the children, piece by piece. Once they're done, they roughly put the children back together, once outside the mother to make sure they have everything. And then, they drop it in an orange biohazard bag. This is not taking place in a Canaanite-influenced Israelite culture. This is taking place in Raleigh, on Jones Franklin Road and Lake Boone Trail Council. The Baal worship of today is the worship of sexual morality and convenience. Notice at the end of the text, it says in 2 Kings 17:17, "This was done in the sight of the Lord and it provoked him." How do we stop provoking God as a nation, as a city? We repent and we place our faith in Christ, what he did on Calvary's cross. A repentance is a changing of mind and we all are gonna be accountable to this God. And Council, I'm pleading with you to make this a sanctuary city. Sage, thank you for meeting with Zach, I really do appreciate you. I know I'm not supposed to talk to you by name, so forgive me for that, but thank you. You've given us more insight on what we need to do, but I'm gonna plead with you to repent, place your faith in Christ, and make this city a sanctuary city. It's gonna take boldness, but do it.
Next we have Zach Brady.
Well, good evening. My name is Zach Brady. I live at 8528 Plymouth Hill Drive in Wake Forest. I've come here asking you tonight to do your duty and protect the most innocent among us unborn children. When threatened by the ruling officials to no longer preach the gospel, Peter responded, "Whether it's right in the sight of God to listen to you rather than to God, you must judge, for we cannot but speak of what we have seen and what we have heard." That is, Peter understood that at the end of the day, he would be judged not by man's laws, but by God's laws, by his unchanging law. He was commanded by the sovereign king to preach Christ and him crucified regardless of what the Jews or Rome may say. Governments can issue all kinds of laws and decrees threatening their citizens with imprisonment and death, but if those laws contradict God's laws, it's the duty of the people to obey God rather than to obey men. His laws are holy and righteous, just and compassionate, and they are unchanging without end. Jesus stated his words will never pass away. But as we survey the history of man and his laws, we see the exact opposite. We see unjust laws, merciless decrees, and constantly changing standards. From the Indian Removal and Fugitive Slave Acts to the evil opinion of Roe, our own government has taken part in the abuse, enslavement, and deaths of millions of its own citizens. However, had our government issued laws that were consistent with the word of God, these atrocities would have never occurred. Had lesser government officials summoned up courage and refused to obey tyrants in implementing their self-serving decrees, the enslavement and deaths of millions could have been prevented. For nearly a year, we petitioned this Council to end child sacrifice in our city. You've been made aware of how children are being slaughtered literally like pigs just miles from this chamber and how your duty as a lesser magistrate is to interpose on their behalf by enacting ordinances that would provide them equal protections and would prosecute anyone seeking to take their lives. Sadly, while our pleas have largely fallen on deaf ears, one response has been that because North Carolina is a Dillon State, that the Council's hands are tied. Dillon's rule basically reads that local governments may only engage in activities that are specifically sanctioned by the state. In other words, since North Carolina legally allows the murder of innocent children, the city of Raleigh is supposedly bound by this legislation and cannot act in a way that would be contradictory to the state. Council, I want to encourage you though tonight that this is patently false. History is full of God-fearing men and women refusing to obey tyrannical governments, choosing rather to stand up for the innocent and the oppressed. From those who hid the Jews to others who acted as places of refuge for runaway slaves, one need not look very far to find citizens and local magistrates that acted with bravery in defiance of unjust laws. Was it without cause? Certainly not. It wasn't at all. But God calls us to put the interests of others above our own and he is not unjust so as to overlook your work. Council, you're not beholden to Dillon, you're not beholden to Roe, you're beholden to God. If state law coupled with Dillon requires you to murder innocent children, you must disobey men and uphold God's law to love your neighbor as yourself. God's your judge, he will hold you accountable for how you rule, not North Carolina. I beg you, turn to him, repent, execute justice, make Raleigh a sanctuary city for unborn children, please.
Next we have Steph Mendel.
Stephanie Mendel, 3225 Oak Grove Circle, Raleigh. Raleigh residents are increasingly upset about this Council's actions to take away our voices. This afternoon, you were presented with a report from the Planning Commission on TC-320. Tonight, you will hold a public hearing to discuss that text change. I understand that I can't comment on the contents of TC-320 at this time because of the public hearing tonight, but I would like to discuss the process. This text change was rushed through because you're desperate to respond to the backlash to your rash decision to immediately eliminate CACs without any replacement mechanism. Meanwhile, we listened to you scrambling to come up with ways to engage the community on things like the city budget, parks' bonds, transit options, et cetera. You had the CACs, but since you threw them out, you are seriously talking about gathering public input by meeting people at dog parks, at dances, and in bars. You're talking about sending staff members door-to-door with flyers, and you think that's more cost-effective and efficient than monthly CAC meetings? You think that will enhance the diversity you aspire to when you don't even have data about diversity at CAC meetings? My background is in employee engagement and communication, and because many of the same principles are true for community engagement, I'd like to offer a few suggestions. It's always difficult to reach large numbers of diverse populations when you're competing for their attention with many other priorities. So it's important to use a variety of tools in a variety of ways regularly over time. And it's important to understand that you won't reach everyone and you won't engage everyone, and that's okay. The key is to ensure that the people who do care are informed and that they trust enough to engage. If one mechanism is working, you don't throw it out because it's not perfect, you build on it. But you seem to have had another agenda in focusing exclusively on the CACs as a keystone of engagement. While they represent an important tool, there are many other opportunities residents have to engage with the city. Those should be examined along with CACs as part of a holistic communications audit that seeks to quantify and evaluate various engagement tools in place. For example, recent meetings on bus rapid transit haven't been particularly well-attended. Not only will an audit identify gaps in opportunities, but it will show where there's room for improvement in all of these tools. It's clear that Raleigh has residents who have passion and energy around a number of critical issues. That's exciting. Let's use that energy to make meaningful improvements in how the city interacts with its residents. I ask you to reinstate the CACs and commit to the continued involvement of CACs in the rezoning process. And I ask you to commit to a community engagement process that seeks to harness the power of our entire community by involving more residents in addressing the issue of engagement.
Next we have Richard Johnson.
Richard Johnson, 3225 Oak Grove Circle. I'm a Raleigh native and like many other Raleigh residents, I was disappointed and upset by your hasty and secretive move to eliminate CACs without anything available to immediately take their place or even on the horizon. Somehow, the majority of you seem to think that absolutely nothing is better than having the historical CACs. Developers have ready access to staff and council, yet you've taken away one of the few mechanisms for gathering public input about how Raleigh grows. I listened to some of your suggestions for gathering public input on transit-oriented development and affordable housing. You had a perfect mechanism in place for gathering that data through the CACs. Now, yeah, and now, yeah, you're talking about sandwich boards, door-to-door canvassing, and showing movies at the Alamo. That's laughable, except I think you're actually serious. The real motivation behind your decision seems to have been to reward developers by not requiring them to engage with neighbors as part of rezoning requests. One has to wonder about the huge amount of money the development community poured into many of your campaigns. And one has to further wonder at the appropriateness of having John Kane, a top campaign donor, monopolize your time at a taxpayer-funded Council retreat a few days later. Not to craft a citywide vision for Raleigh, but to deliver an infomercial and then take you, you know, troop you all out on a bus tour to lobby for funds for his planned development in southeast Raleigh. A development that will require a rezoning, a rezoning that will not involve any CAC input, and a development that includes a stadium that the Holt brothers, the mayor's employees, are seen on video saying about three days later that they want to build. Talk about pay-to-play. The selling of this Council retreat was shameful and unprecedented misuse of taxpayer funds, if nothing else, creating the appearance that this mayor and the majority of this Council are deeply in developer pockets rather than acting in the public interest. Are you proud of what you've done? Do you wake up and say, wow, I did a great job getting rid of CACs? No warning, no public input. Even the Indy Week, which supports the majority of you and endorsed you, Free Local Tabloid, and fawns over you on almost a weekly basis said, and I quote, "Nothing will take away the stink of the way this was done." That's from your supporters. You were elected by 17% of the electorate, a small vocal minority, that a lot of you like to say a lot. More than 69% of the voters did not vote for Mayor Baldwin. Think about it. Of all the people that ran for mayor, if you got three of these people together, two of them didn't vote for Mayor Baldwin. You do not have a mandate to run roughshod over the people of Raleigh. You need to reconsider your awful decision and do the right thing. Thank you.
Next we have Octavia Rainey. Ms. Rainey?
Good evening. My name is Octavia Rainey. I reside at 1516 East Lane Street. I would like to start off by saying, I was at the table with Clarence Lightner when he started the CACs. I would also like to say that for the inner-city communities, at first, we were not aboard because we did not trust the city for the injustices that they had done to the black community. And we don't trust them now. Because y'all do a lot of damage, y'all are very racial, and that is a fact. I would like to start off by saying that in the report, one of the reports that I gave you by Craftsman, he quoted the former city manager saying, "I'd like concentrated code enforcement." That was his way of engaging the citizens. But you know what? That almost caused a riot in Raleigh. Because we in the inner-city was not engaged. If engagement mean coming to your house, knocking to your door at 8 o'clock in the morning, saying, "We are here to inspect your property." But the former city manager, Russell Allen, said he loved that citizen engagement. Shame on him. The second thing I wanna say, you know, you forget, the past is very important. Like I said, I was there with Clarence Lightner. I was only 17. But you had nine committees. One was an intergovernmental committee. The previous city council back then, for nine years, they did not like the city being involved in governmental affairs, lobbying at the General Assembly. You took that away. Then, the Human Relations Commission got involved on a school issue, which trickled down to the CACs. You know what? Y'all took that away. You said it wasn't the CAC role or the human relations roles to be involved with the school system. You took that away. Then, Community Development had a standing committee with the RCAC. You didn't like that because you know what y'all were doing? Y'all was doing displacement. You displaced, even in Fort Ward. Y'all displaced in Fort Ward, didn't even put nothing back, but you moved a whole black neighborhood. So you got rid of Community Development being right there with citizen engagement. So you eventually took away everything, everything. You did that. So what do you have? Then, you turned around and see, this isn't the first time y'all tried to get rid of the CACs. It's not the first time. Then in 2004, you had a consultant come in, that's part of your report.
Ms. Rainey, your three minutes are up, please. Thank you. Next we have Laurlyn Bailey.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Laurlyn Bailey, 3828 Ingram Drive, Raleigh, 27604. First of all, I want to apologize for any hurt I may have caused on social media with my comments. I know your job is not easy, but my comments were the result of frustration surrounding the Brentwood sewer project. And it's great to see the Brentwood people here. As you know, the city will replace the existing sewer pipe that goes through our subdivision with a larger one. It's a huge project, many trees will be lost, that can't be helped. But it is possible to avoid destroying trees in two yards that include old-growth pine that American bald eagles favor and that I've seen visit, and half-century-old holly trees that blue jays return to nest in every year. The public utilities people have claimed it can't be done, that the trees must go, but I've investigated their claims and confirmed that what they were telling me was not true. The committee, and this is an aerial view of the trees, the committee voted on the recommendation of the public utility staff not to make the small change in the path of the sewer. I don't think everyone had sufficient data to recognize that saying yes to that small change was the easiest one, was much less expensive for taxpayers, and that it would save the trees and the bird habitat from unnecessary destruction. We were told a revote was possible, so we are requesting a revote on that small change to the sewer path along our two properties on Ingram Drive. It's just a 50-foot or so difference. So you could see on the slide, the red path is the current one, it cuts through our yards and the old-growth pines. The green path avoids the pines and there's short new growth in that empty lake bed. The city engineer said that the change will not affect the wetlands. The owner of the wetlands also wants this small change to be done because it makes sense. So it'll save trees, it will save bird habitat, it will save taxpayer money, it won't affect the wetlands, it's only about a 50-foot or so change from the existing plan. Now that you have more information, I hope you agree that the best choice is to vote yes to save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Donna Bailey.
Mayor, if I may. I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Bailey, and what I'll do is I will converse with my fellow councilors and see where we can go with this.
My name's Donna Bailey, I live 710 Rosemont Avenue, and I wanna make it clear my comments are not addressed to Councilors Branch and Cox, but to all the rest of you. I wanna talk about what you consider citizen engagement. How will you measure what success looks like? What do you consider real citizen engagement? Is holding a meeting where staff has set up a bunch of boards and people can go in and out, is that citizen engagement? I've been to many, many presentations where staff sets up boards and people walk around and, you know, they're pretty much not, they're not getting a lot of information and a lot of those are very poorly attended. How will you hear from the collective voice if everyone engages individually? How will you get very engaged citizens to participate after they've experienced how you all do business? Totally behind closed doors, secret? How can anyone- How can anyone trust how, what your real motives are trying to engage residents when it's very clear to most people that your interests lie with the development community who supported all of you very much in your reelection? And I do want to finish with some of my comments from two weeks ago that I was not allowed to complete. I did want to reference also the Indy, which supported, endorsed all of you, called this move of this vote to eliminate CACs with nothing in place, behind closed doors, not sharing with everyone. Even the Indy called this move disgusting. If that's coming from your supporter, that's pretty bad, and I totally agree with them. You were elected to represent the interests and rights of all Raleigh stakeholders. That takes credibility. To effectively govern with credibility, you need a deep well of public trust and a high degree of transparency. You have bitterly failed on both fronts and thus managed to fail both yourselves and those you serve. Because of now, you have no credibility whatsoever. If this is how the new city council will be conducting business in secret, behind closed doors, hidden from the agenda, Raleigh is in deep trouble. I also want to talk about that vote you made today to spend an additional hundred and eight thousand dollars on bus shelters. That money could have helped go to help homeless families transition. I thought you all were committed to helping the homeless, and you're going to just blow a hundred and eight thousand dollars? That, that's ridiculous. We don't, we need a bus shelter. We don't need a fancy bus shelter. So I hope you really follow through with your commitment to helping homeless.
Ms. Calla Wright, please.
Good evening. I'm Calla Wright, six thirteen Cooper, ma'am.
Before you start, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just want to thank all the young folks for being here and the Brentwood Boys and Girls Club. Thank you. We'll let, we'll let them filter out Calla.
Okay, start again.
Okay.
I'm Calla Wright, six thirteen, we'll wait till they leave?
Yeah.
All right.
Bye now.
How about that? Wow.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Calla Wright, six thirteen Cooper Road, Raleigh. And I'm here again to discuss the reused waste water tower gentrification and how Jim Crow tactics replicate taking of land in southeast Raleigh, tactics used in nineteen fifty, sharecropping, taking of land still being used today by our city council. Safety remains an issue with the reused water tower and trespassing. As you know, the reused water tower adjourned, adjourned, adjourned to my property, and flooding soil erosion is still an issue. But all of this was done to appease the Raleigh Country Club, a segregated, white club for affluent members. The city of Raleigh failed to develop and implement a stormwater management program to address the adverse effects of the stormwater runoff, disposal, and the harmful environmental pollutants. Proper management of stormwater runoff protects property, controls soil erosion, and reduces flooding. The proper, the management of stormwater is essential to maintaining the integrity of our environment. Also, the loud generator is very annoying with extremely loud sound that can be heard in my home. And yet, the water tower was placed in a predominantly black neighborhood characterized with a cheap piece of land. Your son, Agent Joel Lavingood, made condescending racist comments about what was on my property and also commented about my neighbor's yard. How can he, an agent, make objective, make an objective evaluation on my property assessment when he is making these condescending remarks? Is he a soil scientist, certified water expert? Yet the Jim Crow tactics are still being used to appease the affluent citizens, and yet our needs are being overlooked. So I ask you, as elected officials who are committed to serving and meeting the needs of all people, how can you look at the lives or the issues that we face without having extensive racial training? And I recommend that many of you, our council members, have extensive training when engaging black citizens in southeast Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is, Ms. Wright, just so you understand, we are all going to undergo equity training.
That's mandatory. Because we keep going over the same issues.
Yep.
Day in, and we're in the, I'm talking about the fifties, and our history had been destroyed. And so it's imperative that we're going to move forward as a community, one community, that there's extensive training. Can you look at life through my lens?
Ms. Wright?
Yes, ma'am. I'm done.
Thank you. I only allowed you to continue further because you didn't use up your three minutes. So, thank you. Gavin Omeilia.
My name is Gavin Omeilia, and I live at eighty thirteen Lake Shore Drive. I am here today because abortion is murder. This is basic common sense. It's a biological and scientific fact. So how do we act in light of this? There are only two logical responses to abortion. You can either make it illegal, or you can continue to allow women to murder their children. I would ask today that you choose the first option, that you make abortion illegal here in Raleigh. I propose that we pass an abolition bill that would declare that from the moment of conception, every human being is endowed by God with an inalienable right to life. That under all circumstances, at all ages, this little baby has the right to live. And because of that, I would ask that we prosecute both the mother and the abortionist for the crime of murder. This proposed law would treat all humans, human beings equally and execute justice. It is also constitutional, upholding the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments when they declare that we have a right to life, liberty, and property. Now, I know that many of you are probably thinking, but what about Roe versus Wade? First of all, we must clear up that the Supreme Court does not make laws. Roe versus Wade is an errant court opinion. Also, is it an, it's an express power granted to the city council in the Raleigh City Code, section two dot one four, part forty-two. It says to regulate and prohibit the carrying on of any business or activity which may be dangerous or detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city. No business is more dangerous or detrimental than abortion. Tens of babies are being murdered every single day right here in Raleigh. And this law that is proposed is very similar to a law that is criminalizing prostitution in our city. So we have a law for that, so why can't we have a law for abortion? So I ask that you pass an abolition bill. The only other option is keeping baby murder legal. And you are responsible then for the murder of defenseless children. So I beg you today, have mercy upon your preborn neighbors. Take a stand for justice, because God will hold you accountable for your vote. Because God is just, the penalty for sin, for the sin of abortion, is death, and we all deserve that penalty. And that's why God sent Jesus. He lived the perfect life that you and I failed to live, and then he died the death that we rightfully deserved. And then he didn't stay dead, he rose again defeating death. So I beg you, repent, believe in Jesus Christ, stand up for what is right, stand up for the truth, and end abortion now in Raleigh.
Next is Peter Firth.
I am a Christian. My name is Peter Firth. I live in thirty-six forty Almighty Drive, Wake Forest. Greetings from God the Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm here tonight to plead for the lives of the most innocent of our society, the unwanted, unborn child in the womb of any mother. In the Gospel of St. John, chapter seven, verse twenty-four, it says, "Do not judge by appearances, but judge with right judgment." How are we to judge rightly this issue of abortion? It is our judgment that abortion is lawlessness, a wrong, immoral, wicked evil. Yet the judgment is not ours, but God's, for his commandment is, "Thou shalt not kill." God has given us a law, yet none of you keeps the law. God demands complete obedience. The demand for legal abortion, for legal abortion, is not a demand for women's health, and the pro-choice movement does not allow for any such positive pro-choice options such as giving life through adoption. What the radicals demand actually is to be free from the responsibility of their own choices. The issue of abortion is more than what it seems to be on face value. It represents one aspect of an attack on our country that seeks to abolish traditional religion and replace it with feminist control and a religion of the new atheism to be the moral compass for our country. Through lies and deception and a twisted interpretation of the Fourth Amendment, radical feminists invented a term called right to privacy to take advantage of an authority that would impose their minority agenda on unsuspecting and unwilling nation. Such is their influence that to speak out against abortion now is treated as an attack on women and subject to the most severe condemnation from a society duped into believing that the issue is actually about women's health. Radicals have done a great job playing the victims of bigoted and hateful Christian majority, attacking specifically and only the Christian heritage as the source of all societal woes. These radicals set themselves up as the redeemers of society. Christianity is a roadblock to their quest for total control and must be removed. Systematically, God and Christian religion is being silenced, and if they have their way, outlaw all societal influence. Christians are compelled to take a stand against evil in this world, to speak up in the face of the lies and deception of a lawless and godless society. Truth and judgment belong exclusively, exclusively to God because he is truth, and his law is a basis for all morality. We are not the enemies of those who hate God because we were once haters too. Eternal life is found in Christ. The way of man and all his wisdom leads only to death, the second death and eternal death. The Son of God came to save us from the law by which no man can live. But by the shedding of Jesus' precious blood, a new and final covenant with mankind was inaugurated. The Christian claim to righteousness and salvation is through faith alone in Christ. We plead that you do the right thing.
Next we have Ken Cheeseman. Is Mr. Cheeseman here? Okay. Next we have Robert Rice. Rice, I'm sorry. Is Mr. Rice here? He's out as well. We have Faza Aiden. Okay. Keegan Omeilia.
Keegan Omeilia, eighty thirteen Lake Shore Drive. Good evening, mayor, council members. Murder is an act that goes against everything God stands for. God loves children and hates murder. You are allowing the murder of children in this city. All of you are very knowledgeable. You know what a baby is, you know what murder is, and yet you are not willing to stand up for what is right. You sit back and let murder happen, and you don't have the courage to make a change. Abortion murders children, and you need to make Raleigh a sanctuary city for children. Babies are baby babies. Nothing magical happens in the birth canal. Think about your argument for just a moment. You say it's legal and even a woman's right to kill a baby in the womb. However, as soon as a baby is born, the woman should be charged with murder and thrown into prison. What happens that suddenly gives baby rights, babies' rights and value? What does being born change the baby? Obviously, there is something very amazing and magical about the birth canal that suddenly turns a clump of cells into a baby, which also means that the birth canal would give this baby human rights and value. Maybe science has been wrong all this time, and it's really the birth canal that makes someone a human. This reasoning makes absolutely no sense. Babies are babies, whether or not they go through the birth canal. Every single abortion kills a baby. Size, development, defects do not change the fact that every baby in the womb is a human. Women should not be able to get away with murder. Absolutely nothing justifies murder, and yet, women are allowed to kill their children out of convenience. Babies with special needs are killed and discriminated against. Babies are murdered when their parents don't have enough money, don't want their life to change. They use excuses like the baby would grow up being poor, bullied, and have a hard life. The solution then is to kill them so they don't have a hard life. If we all lived under that logic, none of us would be alive. We all have hardships and struggles in life, and yet no one has the right to murder us. And when people stand up against abortion, women simply say it's their body and no one can control what they do to it. Now, plantation owners use the same argument. They would say, "It's my property, so therefore no one can control what I do to it." This is vile, and God hates it. Women should never, under any circumstance, be allowed to slaughter their children. So, council, what are you going to do? Are you really going to let a court decision decide whether or not you kill babies? Are you going to stand back and let children be murdered? Or are you going to stand up for what is right and make a change? Babies are being murdered. What are you going to do about it? Are you going to do anything, or are you just going to sit back and let babies be murdered?
Okay, next we have Kimberly McTarian.
Dr. Kimberly McTarian, four two two four Crowfield Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina, two seven six one zero. Good evening, council. I am here today before you on behalf of two young black men in southeast Raleigh, one being Mr. Terrence Dominique Eaton and his brother Jamal Eaton. On November the twentieth, Terrence Eaton was served a citation for possession of paraphernalia. While he attempted to ingest a substance other than marijuana, he would give his, the officers his brother's name, and they would leave him on the streets to die because the officers only gave him a citation. Now, Mr. Eaton possessed no identification, so the officers could not properly identify him. The officers caught Mr. Eaton in the act of ingesting a substance. He too was not taken to the hospital nor to jail where he could have been evaluated. Instead, he was left on the streets to die. Due to the fact officers had left him on the streets, he would also obtain another charge, another trespassing charge. This charge, he would also pin on his brother. The problem is, his brother works for Wake County, and he has to report every incident he has with, with his employer. Mr. Eaton also wore an ankle bracelet, of which officers identified, yet they did not remove him off the streets. He had an ankle bracelet because he was a sex offender. The ironic thing about this case is that not only is Mr. Eaton's cases on Rose Lane, but this is the same location that Curtis Mangum. If many of you remember, the young man who swallowed, ingested cracked cocaine, and he was taken to the precinct in southeast Raleigh to be searched instead of taken to the hospital. He would later die there at the hospital because the officers got him there too late. My question to you today is, what is the city of Raleigh's position on the war on drugs? Because you're leaving our addicts out to die. You won't even arrest them or take them to the hospital in time. And in this case, you didn't take them to the hospital at all. You didn't identify them properly, you left them on the streets, he picked up another charge, and he still placed these charges on his brother. He's now locked up, but his brother has to continue to go to court to fight for his good name. These type of cases are repeated, and this is what you use to evaluate bad neighborhoods. This is how you justify taking our neighborhoods from us. It's from drugs and crime. So you can't have our neighborhood and not help our addicts. Please help me understand your position on the war on drugs.
Kimberly, thank you for your time. Your three minutes are up.
And will you be responding to this?
You know that you and I can always sit down and talk.
Okay. That's all I want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo Gallenbeck.
Yes, hi again. This is Mary Jo Gallenbeck. I live at twenty-two oh six Creston Road. Last month, I was here to talk about the relationship between transportation and climate change, and I explained how the major polluter of greenhouse gases is the collected volume of private vehicles used. And I also shared at that time that the majority of our transportation budget is spent on expanding roadways in an effort to reduce traffic congestion, but research has proven that it only increases the volume of private vehicle usage. And also, I talked about the investment in infrastructure for active transportation, which would be bicycle, walking, scooting. And that is a means to lower car trip usage by having the infrastructure by having the infrastructure of a protected bikeways that are connected by a network that enables people to go from A to B without having to be engaged with higher speed traffic. Afterwards, I was asked, what does it mean to be a protected bike lane? A protected bike lane in my, is always for me, is physically separated from vehicle traffic. And so what you would have currently is potentially plastic bollards, which are plastic posts that are installed and are flexible. And I asked the biking community, why do we use the plastic bollards? And they always explain, well, it's to protect the car vehicles, which I can't understand why we would use something to protect bike riders that actually is designed to protect a vehicle. And so what protected bike lanes should have concrete barriers that increase the safety of usage of that form of transportation. I also explored the 2009 Bicycle Plan, published, the Bicycle Planning, Bicycle Planning documentation, and it is projected out to 2030. And we have increased infrastructure for riding your bicycle, but none of that infrastructure has been protected, physically protected, divided from vehicle traffic. So the safety hasn't increased, and consequently, the bike ridership has not increased either. The needle has remained the same at less than 1%. If we put protected barriers, we will increase ridership. If you increase ridership, drivers will see how you can ride your bike safely. If drivers can see that, they'll move from driving their cars to riding bikes and will save lives. Thank you for your time.
So, Mary Jo, you might want to know that Jonathan Melton today asked for an update on our bike infrastructure plans. We'll be having a work session in April.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your attention to it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have matters scheduled for public hearing. The first matter is downtown Hillsborough Street Municipal Service Districts.
So, Mayor and Council, the staff has a presentation here, but what you might want to do is see if there are comments for this particular item. In a nutshell, this is the public hearing associated with your two municipal service districts for downtown as well as Hillsborough Street, and those two areas require by statute public comment when we have to renew the service contracts every four years. So we're at that point, we have to renew the service contracts. So I might suggest maybe you just hear input from the public about service delivery and potential changes, and if you have additional questions, we have some PowerPoint information if you like.
Okay. So what I'm going to do then is open the hearing. I'm going to ask if there's anyone here from the public who would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. I'm going to close the hearing then, and these, this will allow negotiations to, or the contract to be.
Right. What will happen next is that we will issue a request for proposals for contractors to provide service in those two municipal service districts, and then we will bring that back for your consideration during the spring.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, tax exempt bonds issue, Dale's Academy.
So, Mayor and Council, I'll try to help with this one, although this is not a particular staff item, and I'm sure the city attorney will help me if I get this wrong, but in short, these are tax exempt bonds that are issued not by the city of Raleigh. We have no fiduciary or financial responsibility for these bonds whatsoever. However, federal government regulations, primarily the IRS, require a local public hearing to comment on that particular issue. So in other words, the city of Raleigh is holding the public hearing and providing response to that, but they, it's not our debt, it's not our financial responsibility. It's just basically a quirk of federal tax law requirements. So you are required to hold the public hearing, but it's not our debt. If you approve it, then they can move forward with the project. So that's it in a nutshell. What I would suggest is that you hear from the applicant because it's primarily their interest that's at stake, not the city, not the city organization.
Are you, you're representing the applicant? Okay. I think we can make it brief.
Very brief.
[laughing].
Good evening. I'm Mary Nash Rusher. We are bond counsel in connection with this issue. As noted, this is a requirement of the Internal Revenue Code that the jurisdiction in which the project sits give approval in principle only to the issuance of these bonds after a public hearing. This is a private school. It is already built. This is simply a refinancing that allows them to lower their debt load.
Thank you. That was brief. Is there anyone else here to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I think it's rough and indicated that this is routine. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mary Nash. Okay, now we have one, two, three, four sidewalk improvement projects. I'm just going to ask by show of hands so I know who is interested in these. Who is here for one of these sidewalk projects? Is anyone opposed to any of these sidewalk projects? Okay, why don't you come down front because we're going to ask you to speak, and then, but we're going to let Jason start this. Jason, if you will, I mean, if there's anything controversial or...
Yeah. What I'm going to do, and I apologize, I thought these slides made it in here. Did that just load? I was going to give the presentation for the first item, state that the next three after that have substantially the same slides. If you need or want any of the information, I can also give that presentation. Let me see if this will. Apologize for wasting your time again. I'm Jason Myers in the Department of Transportation, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Rembert Part B sidewalk petition. Quick overview of sidewalk petitions, a few facts that they are issued upon request. There are no assessments for sidewalks. The streets must have curb and gutter to be eligible for that. The votes for these are one property, one vote. The votes are taken online or by mail, and the threshold that we bring it to you at is if there's a majority of the properties vote in the affirmative that respond. The Rembert Part B sidewalk petition is a portion of Rembert Drive in northeast Raleigh near Crabtree Valley Mall, kind of in that angle between Creedmore and Glenwood Avenue. This particular sidewalk project would be about a half mile in length. At this point, tentative recommended to be a five-foot sidewalk set back about three and a half feet from the curb on the north side of Rembert Drive from Winthrop to Brookhaven, and the estimated cost at this point, construction and right of way, is about $1.2 million. And again, no assessments. This is it in the map around Brookhaven Nature Park and York Elementary. One of the items later is on Brookhaven Drive, which connects to this. It's not shown on this map. This sidewalk petition, with 90% of the property owners participating in the vote, had 75% approval threshold, and that means that nine folks out of the 36 that responded voted no, and that was out of 40 total properties. Any questions before we open the hearing?
Anyone have questions? Okay. Anyone would like to come up and speak on this issue? Give your name and address, and pull the microphone down. Yeah, and just provide your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay, my name is Deborah McCarty, and I live at 4800 Rembert Drive. This is the second time this petition has gone out in our neighborhood, and the first time it was not divided up into segments. And I'm not opposed to having sidewalks. What I'm opposed to is somebody walk that. There are going to have to be retaining walls. A lot of trees are going to have to come down for a half a mile of a sidewalk that dead-ends at two spots in the neighborhood. It does not provide sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. If we're going to invest in that and have that disruption, I don't think it should be done in pieces and not provide sidewalks for the whole neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I live at 4813 Brookhaven Drive. I'm speaking in support of the sidewalk petition. I'm one of the property owners who voted yes on the Brookhaven portion. I have a daughter who's five. We commonly walk in the neighborhood. She will attend York Elementary School starting in the fall, and my hope is that she will be able to walk on a sidewalk at some point during her tenure at the elementary school. And it would also be great to walk to the nature park so that the sidewalk, as it's envisioned, would connect a significant portion of the neighborhood to the nature park, which has a sidewalk already. For some reason, a short portion of the street. You know, I looked up a bunch of safety statistics about sidewalks, but I think that everybody's pretty familiar with that sort of information, so I won't go over it. It's just that, you know, I care deeply about the safety of my family and my neighbors. You know, it's a great neighborhood to live in, and I think it would be better with sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name's Laura Hathcock. I live at 511 Rembert Drive, Raleigh 27612. I'm the petitioner for the Rembert and Brookhaven Drive sidewalks. I'd just like to start with mentioning how she said the sidewalk would end, and it's not going to end. We're already getting sidewalks on Winthrop, which is from Millbrook down to Rembert. I don't know if you have a map, but...
Could you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
We're getting a sidewalk from Winthrop, which goes from Millbrook Road to Rembert. That's supposed to be done this year, first quarter of 2020. I petition Rembert as two sections because I was told that maybe that would be better by the engineers, because it's such a long road. It's a mile. My section, which is Rembert A, failed. Rembert B passed, but if they were combined, I think it would be at 54% as passing. Regardless of that, there's a school, York Elementary, which is at Brookhaven and Rembert. So if Winthrop, Rembert, Section B, and Brookhaven are passed, there will be a connective walk from Glenwood Avenue going up Brookhaven to the school, crossing over Rembert and up Winthrop to Millbrook. I think sidewalks are really important. I wrote a whole speech, but I don't think I need to read all that. I have two children, one and three. We like to walk. It's too dangerous. It's, I don't know if you're familiar with the neighborhood, but it's very hilly, very curvy. I have a double stroller. I'm running off the road. It's, so we go to Shelley Lake, and we, I'm sorry, I'm a terrible spot-... We go to Shelley Lake...
You're doing fine.
And we drive there, and it's just sad because, you know, it's such a pretty neighborhood, and I like to walk in the neighborhood. And we have an elementary school. I've heard from numerous parents who wish that their children could walk. For some people, it's right across the street. Some people, it's less than a mile. No one can walk. It's far too dangerous. So I think those are the main points, and I think it would benefit the majority of the residents, and most people I spoke with were in favor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we are going to then close the hearing. Any questions or comments from the council?
Just, just on the...
Counselor Melton first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I think sidewalks are extremely important. I would like to get folks out of their cars and other ways to get around. I was a little concerned when there was a comment that the sidewalk would basically just be floating in its own existence, but hearing that there are other projects that are going to connect it to an elementary school, to other major, you know, walkways and streets, I think this is what we need to be working on. We need to be working on these connections, so I support it.
Counselor Branch?
I definitely support it. I just had a question. The hearing, I guess it covered all four when you opened it?
No, we're doing one.
No, we're doing one.
Some of them talked about others.
Okay. That's why I was confused. I wanted to be sure. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Right. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the staff to move forward with the design and construction of this project.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Passes eight zero. Next, Jason, you're going to do Turnbridge Drive.
And this is actually a street improvement petition to install curb and gutter without sidewalk in a street that previously paid an assessment for a street improvement project in approximately 1991. I can give a similar slide presentation if you wish, or I can just leave it at that information.
Let's leave it at that for now, and let's see who's here to speak on this issue. Is there anyone here to speak on the street improvements for Turnbridge Drive? Well, I'll open the hearing. I'll ask again, anyone here to speak on Turnbridge Drive? Okay, close the hearing. Anyone have questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Oh, Madam Mayor. Like...
You slipped into lawyer mode.
I think as for the first project, we, I think we'd all love to be able to do it neighborhood by neighborhood, but I, obviously fiscally, we can't, and just responding to the first speaker. But we have to do them in segments, but we are trying to connect as much as we can, and that's the way we have to go about it. So with that, I move to authorize the staff to move forward with design and construction of this sidewalk project.
You mean the street improvement?
Street improvement project, excuse me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes eight zero. Next, we have sidewalk improvement project, which was referred to earlier, Freeman Street, Postle Street, and Coleman Street. Do you have any additional information, Jason, that you want to share?
Just answer questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions? All right.
What was the vote?
Seventeen, yes, three, no.
And three not responding.
I thought you meant the previous vote, and I thought, that's Gale Street. This is, the vote was seventeen to three out of 29 property owners with, that doesn't add up.
No. That's 26.
Yeah, the backup memo may be correct. I apologize for that. Should be seventeen to three.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? It's Freeman Street, Postle Street, and Coleman Street. Okay. Close the hearing. Would anyone...
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So it passes eight, nothing. That was the vote, eight, nothing. And sidewalk improvements, Brookhaven Drive.
No, we are, other than to state that this connects to the first item at Rembert that we talked about earlier, this information's basically the same.
Was it the same vote?
The vote was seventeen to twelve, so 59% approval, and was that about pretty high participation, 83% participation, but not, not quite as... but not, not quite as, as high as Rembert B.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak to the sidewalk improvements on Brookhaven Drive?
Mayor, I provided a letter from Bernadine Weddington, who could not be at the meeting, and asked that her letter of opposition be made a part of the record.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's nobody here to speak either way? No, we got you. We know you don't like public speaking, so it's all right. We'll, we'll save you that. All right, I'm going to close the hearing then. We've already heard from some petitioners. Would, any questions, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Eight, nothing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If we could, not today, I would like for council to consider, maybe we do a short prohibition on sidewalk petitions. And my reasons is because we are currently $4 million behind on our current projects that came out in our last work session. So I think until we can catch up and fund, I want to make sure that we set expectations. So someone comes in looking for a sidewalk, realizing that it may not happen in two years, which is the standard process from the time we approve it to getting done because of our backlog. So I'm just mentioning it now here for consideration in the future.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have staff come back to us with some recommendations on how to proceed?
That's fair.
Okay. All right, got that? Mr. City Manager?
I got it.
Okay, excellent. Okay, our next item is the annexation petition. Well, it's concurrent with rezoning case Z-37. So, Bynum, my guess is we need to move that down to that zoning case and...
It'd be great if we talked about them together.
Okay, so we will skip this till we get to Z-37? Or do you want to move Z-37 up to here?
Let's move it up.
Move it up.
Okay, we got it.
Right.
Go for it.
So this is a parcel at Zero Page Road. It's currently vacant. It's not in our city limits, but it is, and it's not in our ETJ, but it is eligible for annexation. Right now, it's zoned rural residential, which is a Durham County zoning district, but it is within the annexation boundary for Raleigh. So we have a negotiated agreement with Durham, and it's within our boundary. And as you mentioned, it says associated with Z-3719. That's a request for R6 zoning to facilitate residential development. And the annexation has to be applied before you can rezone, and you need to hold two hearings. And you shouldn't annex, probably if you don't want to rezone.
Okay, what should we go with first?
You want me to give you both presentations, and then you could hold the two hearings?
Sure.
Okay.
First, let me ask, is there anyone here to speak on this rezoning case and annexation? Are you the applicant or representing the applicant? All right, is there anyone here in opposition? Okay, Bynum, why don't you walk us through, but...
Yes, ma'am.
You got it, thank you.
I'm with you. So this is a, there's city zoning adjacent, that's R6. There's also rural, rural districts in Durham County adjacent. I think the aerial is pretty helpful. You can see that there's development to the north in Durham County, and we, there's also development to the south that's not showing up here yet because it's so fresh in, or this part is also, I believe, in play with the same applicant, but already in Raleigh and ready to go.
Okay.
Yep. And so just a couple of views of the site, currently undeveloped. Consistent with your plan, with the comprehensive, with the future land use map, consistent with the plan, Planning Commission, and Northwest CAC both recommend approval. What questions can I answer?
Does anyone have any questions?
I had a question around the annexation. I just, do you have a map that just shows the sewer and the water? How close?
I do. So you can see there's utility down here, and my understanding is that the applicant is in control of this parcel and the larger one to the south, and so development of the two would bring utilities together.
Yes, yes.
Okay. What else, what else can I answer?
I think everybody is good. So I'm going to make an offer to the applicant. Since no one here is speak against it, we reviewed this case.
Open the public hearing for the annexation first.
Okay, but I don't think we need any additional information, so, okay. All right, so we're going to open the meeting for the annexation first. Open the hearing, okay? The applicant is here. No one is here to speak against this, so I'm going to close the hearing. Any questions? This is the annexation. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is that a question?
I'm making sure I'm doing it correctly. Move to approve. Say it with more authority. It was second and two. There we go.
All right, there we go. So we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes eight, zero. Now for the second part of the rezoning. Bynum, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, ma'am, I'm getting my slides up for the next case.
Okay. I am going to open the hearing. Again, anyone here to speak in favor or against, except for you? All right, there's no one here to speak against it. We will close the hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 3, 2020, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the zoning amendment. This approval was also deemed an amendment to the future land use plan, land use map, excuse me, to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next is rezoning Z-4 at Valentine Drive.
Right, so this is a rezoning from Plan Development District to residential mixed-use 12 stories with conditions. The net effect of the rezoning here, really, they're changing the district, but the new district very closely matches what's currently allowed. The primary change is to allow changes to the courtyard and to eliminate the provision of a required retail space in the ground floor so they can use that space for something else. They don't have to reserve that as vacant space, unutilized, without a tenant.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission and this Wade, which was just the Wade CAC at that time, before the Wade-Hillsborough combination of CACs, voted in favor. Is that right, Donna? Oh, they had combined? Oh, excuse me, they had combined at the time.
This goes back to 1917.
2017.
2017, yeah. Sometimes it feels like 1917.
Right, not quite that old.
2017, okay, that's odd.
Well, so came to public hearing and was sent back to Planning Commission for further consideration, and languished at Planning Commission for some time, trying to get signatures together, some complex ownership issues.
Okay, thank you on that. All right, is there, I'm going to ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? All right, is there anyone here to speak against this? All right, I'm going to open the hearing. With nobody here to speak against this, and with the length of time this has gone on, I'm looking for the, to the district rep for some leadership. Are you good with us moving ahead?
Please.
Okay, so I'm going to open the hearing. I think I already have, but now I'm going to close the hearing. And if you would like to make a motion, Counselor Martin?
Sure. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated February 4, 2020, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the zoning amendment.
Okay, do we have a second? Counselor Branch? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next, rezoning Z-23.
So the public hearing was opened for this on February 4 and continued to this date at the request of council. I just would offer some thoughts about process at this point. If you want to modify, if you want the applicant to modify the conditions on the case, you'd need to close the public hearing. If you want to take action, either to approve or deny, you would need to modify the public hearing. If you feel like additional discussion is necessary, you might defer to a future date certain.
I'm, I'm going to ask the applicant, you've been here for a while. Do you want to give us two more weeks to...
Yes, if I can, if I can speak to each one of the council members. I have been trying to contact, talk with, and I would rather talk with him one-on-one. I talked to Mr. Knight. He's one day old, but I don't really, I know, I need to know why. If you don't know that, you should sit.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to suggest. I know there are people in the audience who are against this. I feel like we're all friends. We, we have seen each other so often on this issue. But we would like to take two weeks, and if you would like to meet with us, I would ask that you contact the council office, council staff, or have them contact...
Have her speak to the mic.
Yeah, you know what? I didn't ask you to come up and speak, but we, we get it. We will be in touch, and we will schedule some one-on-one time, okay?
Mayor, can there be another motion to extend the public hearing again?
I move to extend the, the public hearing for two weeks.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we have rezoning Z-36.
I believe we're actually on Z-32 on Sunny Brook Road. So this is a request to rezone from R6 to OX3. UCAC and Planning Commission both recommend approval. I would ask that you continue the public hearing two weeks to allow us to complete appropriate mail and posted notice. We advertised in the paper, but the mail notice did not happen as appropriate. My understanding is that the applicant was comfortable with that because they could not be here tonight for personal reasons.
Okay. With that said, I move that we continue this case for two weeks to March 17.
Thank you.
I think you're running it right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was two weeks, you said. Okay. All right, the next is Z-4619.
So the CAC voted against this as a request to go, to add height and affrontage to a site at the intersection of New Hope and Pool Road. The Planning Commission did not, makes no recommendation. They failed two motions, one in favor, one against. My understanding is that the applicant is requesting denial at this time. So rezoning initiated by a, by a buyer, and I understand that deal is no longer moving forward. If you are inclined to take positive action, we have the same notice issue here. So just if, if you're feeling positive about it, I would just ask that you defer to take your positive action.
Madam Mayor, I think with the applicant asking for this to be denied, I think we could close this hearing and give them their wishes.
Open first.
Just give me one second, please. Okay. This is your district, you, you know...
Yeah, the applicant is...
Has asked for denial.
Has asked for denial, so I think we need to open the hearing.
All right, I will open the hearing. Anyone here to speak on this matter? Okay, I will close the hearing.
All right. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 3, 2020, contained in the general material, and to deny the zoning amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We already covered Z-37. Next is Z-46.
Yes, ma'am, this is the last rezoning request for the night. This is the Willa Run South NCOD request. So this is 33 acres, applying the NCOD to an area currently zoned R4. The neighborhood initiated this back in March of 2019, and the most recent council action happened in September to direct, to adopt the text change and also direct staff to initiate the rezoning request. The Planning Commission and the North CAC both recommend approval. So 33 of the 38 properties involved participated in the initial petition back in March of last year. We provided the study to council in May. The text change was approved in September, and the rezoning was authorized at that time. So we're in the rezoning process at this point, about a year later. And so the study looked at these properties, predominantly residential area just south of Ravenscroft School. That seems, a couple of images of properties in the study area. The adopted standards would set a minimum lot size of just over 32,000 square feet, about three-quarters of an acre. And that would put about 29 parcels in conformity with that standard. And the NCOD would prevent the simple subdivision of 37 of the lots in the neighborhood of the 38 lots. So the change here is you're seeing a reduction in maximum possible units. The, it is consistent with the low density designation on the future land use map, largely consistent with the plan, inconsistent with the compact development policy and the zoning for housing policy, which is really pushing us towards more compact development and more variety of housing. Again, Planning Commission and North CAC have both voted in favor. Can I answer questions?
Okay, I'm going to ask, before I open the hearing, is there anyone here to speak against this? Okay. I haven't opened the hearing yet, but if you'll just, you're ready. The other question I have, who is here to speak in favor of this or in favor of it? Okay. What I'm going to do is open the hearing now. We'll let David speak on, say your piece, and then we'll decide what we do next. So I'm opening the hearing. Traditionally, we do eight minutes aside, but you're the only one. So if you spoke for eight minutes, I would have to come get you. Yes.
David Almer, 2105 Cedar Bluff Court. First off, you guys are doing a great job. You don't hear it enough, so thank you all. As you know, I'm not a big fan of NCODs, particularly in North Raleigh. I do understand, after speaking to a few of you, you understand the process was started some time ago, under different rules. So first, thank you for those of you who are working to change the rules going forward for NCODs. My biggest concern when you do that, I've been told there'll be some limitations. These need to come, if they continue to exist, with expiration dates. Nobody in this room knows how Raleigh is going to look exactly in 20 years. We have a lot of great people in the planning department and a lot of smart people that we elect, but nobody has a crystal ball. And having an area that is basically permanently downzoned is just going to make that land and those houses more and more expensive. Those houses will eventually be torn down, and under the zoning there, the only thing that will go in will be ridiculously expensive. And it doesn't meet, as we saw, with compact housing. It's not going to make Raleigh more affordable. And we have seen through the NCODs, you guys already started looking at it, they, they don't increase affordability. These don't work, and these just trap us in zoning policies years down the road. They aren't going to work. So I understand many of you are going to vote for it. I understand you're doing that partially because of the old rules. Please, if you do, well, you're going to do a lot of great things. Please fix this one, too, while you're here for the next year or so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know the proponents are here. Would you, in the interest of time, pick one person to come speak on your behalf? I think you've already heard we're ready to vote on this, so...
Yes, if I could just get the people from Willa Run to stand up. These are a few of the neighbors of Willa Run South. We're the people who live, pardon? Who live in it and love it. My name is George Fleming, and I... Who live in it and love it. My name is George Fleming, and I live at 7101 Catamount Court. More than 90% of all the owners of Willow Run South, which is 35 of 38 total homes, petitioned city council a year ago for this neighborhood conservation overlay district. There's been a lot of conversation about neighborhood conservation overlay districts. It has been a lengthy but fair process, and we thank the elected and appointed officials who have listened to us and who have heard us. We thank you all for the careful consideration we know you have put into this particular issue. Councilmember Buffkin has worked with a number of the Willow Run South neighborhood, neighbors, to fully understand our request and to represent us to the council and the council to us. Starting last year, the city council voted in favor of the Willow Run South N-C-O-D four times, the Planning Commission twice, the CAC once, all by clear majorities. That is only to say that everyone who has taken time to look at Willow Run South has seen an N-C-O-D that makes sense, with its rare combination of defined boundaries, open spaces, moderately priced homes, extensive tree canopy, and wildlife habitat. At 33 acres, Willow Run South would be one of the smallest of the city's N-C-ODs, and that is fitting for a true gem. We thank you all for your consideration on behalf of everyone who has worked with us, and also, I want to thank the planning staff, which has been so professional and so responsive throughout a lengthy process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing now. I know, Patrick, you look like you're ready to make a motion.
Ready when you are, ma'am.
Okay, if there's, let's get a motion on the table in a second, and then if anybody has any comments, okay? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Buffkin.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 3, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. I know a number of you would like to comment. Patrick...
If I may, I'll be brief, Mayor, and I know others are waiting to speak. As you've heard tonight, our neighbors in Willow Run have faithfully followed the city process to obtain this rezoning for over a year now. You're also well aware that we've had a community-wide discussion that I think was robust and healthy about this zoning tool. In particular, the work of the GNR Committee has informed our collective understanding of this zoning tool, and I appreciate that this work was carried out in a transparent and deliberate manner under the leadership of Chair Stewart. In the course of this work, we've learned that there are no other pending applications for N-C-ODs. With respect to this application before us tonight, it's my view that this request is eminently reasonable, regulating only lot size, and as you've heard, one of the smallest N-C-ODs in the city. I believe this N-C-O-D, which would be located in an area that's not along a major transit corridor, would present negligible potential impact to housing affordability, an issue that is of the utmost urgency to our city. Now, I recognize that many of you have reservations about allowing N-C-ODs in the future. Tonight, I see an opportunity for our council to do what's fair to the residents of Willow Run North, and, excuse me, Willow Run South, by approving this application, and to turn the page, refocus our efforts on this housing affordability crisis, and how we're going to help the folks that are struggling in our community. So, I ask for your support, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Melton?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I just feel like I need to, on the record, explain how I'm about to vote, since I so clearly ran against the use of N-C-ODs as a tool. I do not plan to support any further N-C-ODs. I do not believe that they should be as widely applied as they have in the past, but this group started this process before I had the good fortune of sitting at this table, and they've done everything they were asked to do and told to do, and they were given every indication along the way that they would be approved, and I am not going to stand in their way, and I will support this one. But I will not be voting in favor of any other process, one, start the process for any other ones.
Okay. Counselor Stewart?
I can make it even briefer and say, "Here, here." I also appreciate the work that you all have already put in and where you're at in this process, but we're not looking to approve any N-C-ODs moving forward.
Counselor Martin?
Thanks. Thank you for all the effort that you've put in and the outreach you've done to council. Yeah, I've tried to respond to all of the emails I've received, even up until about 5 o'clock. Have not been totally successful, but echo the, what you've heard from the table, but want to make sure that fairness is applied here, and I know that you all have had a valiant effort in trying to follow the amount of paperwork that is required in this effort, and I'm grateful that you all have made it this far, and so we'll be supportive this evening.
Anyone else?
Me.
Counselor Cox?
And I want to thank you as well for all the work and effort that you have put into this. Unlike my fellow counselors, I will consider future N-C-ODs. I think the vision and expectation for our neighborhoods should lie more than just with the eight people up here on this council. I think it should lie with the people that live in our neighborhoods and have their own vision for what they want in their neighborhoods. That's why I support your N-C-O-D, and that's why I will support other N-C-ODs in the future, and thank you for coming.
I just want to say thank you. I am going to support this tonight because of the hard work that you put in. Like some of my fellow counselors, I think we really need to relook at N-C-ODs and how they're used, so, but tonight I will be voting for this, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes 8-0. Thank you very much. We know it's an arduous process, so thank you. Quiet claps. You heard me say no clapping or jeering earlier, right? We wouldn't have taken it away from you. It's okay. Okay, now we have, let's see, TCZ-7-19, 4251 Park Lake Avenue. Before we even start, I'm just going to ask the question mark. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Okay, Chad, thank you. If you could just give us a brief, brief overview...
Okay.
Of anything we need to know, or may have missed.
This is actually the applicant's PowerPoint. TCZ-7-19 is an amendment to the conditions associated with zoning case Z-25-17. The property is located at 4251 Park Lake Avenue, just to orient you, it's along Edwards Mill, Creedmoor, and the Park Lake Avenue intersection. There are 14 conditions that currently govern the property. In the interest of time, I won't go through every single one that's listed there.
Actually, please, no, because we are pretty familiar with this.
Okay.
We know there's no opposition, so just, if there's anything specific that you think we, you need to bring up.
I'll just state that they're requesting a change to the size limitations condition, the parking condition, and the signage condition. There were no comments on this at the Planning Commission level, and the application was recommended for approval unanimously by that, by the commission. I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions?
Can you advance to the chart? I just want to see the parking stuff.
Okay, these are the changes to the parking. Basically, what it's doing is adding another row of parking in between the building that will face Park Lake Avenue.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I think, Chad, you're the only one here to speak on this. There's no opposition, or is there anyone here to speak against this? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. And, Chad, I think we're ready, so if it's okay with you, can we close the hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, close the hearing. Would anyone, Counselor Knight, this is your district, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would, thank you. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated February 11, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the text change to the conditional use zoning.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 8-0. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is text change 3-20.
Text change, TC-3-20 is the text amendment to require an additional neighborhood meeting for large and/or impactful rezonings and text changes to zoning use condition, zoning conditions. Just to give you a history, this was initiated by the council on February 4th this year. In April of 2002, the code was amended to require applicant of all conditional use zoning requests to conduct a meeting with the owners of the property included in the proposed change, as well as owners within 100 feet of all sides of the subject property. The meeting was conducted at least six weeks prior to what was then a joint meeting between the city council and Planning Commission. In June of 2010, the code was amended to require neighborhood meeting, a neighborhood meeting be conducted within six months prior to the submittal of any conditional use zoning petition. In February of 2013, when the UDO was adopted, it expanded the requirement that a neighborhood meeting be conducted within six months prior to submittal of any rezoning application, not just for conditional use rezoning requests. UDO also increased the notification from 100 to 500 feet. As far as purpose and need, the addition of another neighborhood meeting for large or impactful cases, having a broader audience and scheduling after submittal but before Planning Commission consideration would further define, redefine, refine applications. This meeting would also afford applicants and the surrounding community opportunity to meet and share issues and address any concerns. In this, the originally drafted ordinance, the triggers that were in place to define larger impactful cases were those where the subject property was five acres or more. The change would increase the maximum building height to five stories or more, or increase the maximum building height by five stories or more. The proposed change increases residential density by an additional 10 dwelling units per acre. The request is a change, is to change from a residential or conservation management zoning district to a mixed-use or special zoning district other than a CM, and the request seeks to create any type of PD district. The second meeting would need to be conducted after city planning has confirmed that the application is complete, but it could be no earlier than 30 days following that application's submittal. Notice of the, the meeting would span a radius of 1,000 feet, and a meeting report would be provided by the applicant to the city, no less than 10 days prior to the first Planning Commission meeting. This report would have to include the list of persons or organizations contacted about the meeting, the date, the time, the location, list of attendees, and a summary of the issues that were discussed. Now, when the staff did their research on this, specifically on the triggers, we took a look at the last 20 applications that were submitted in 2019, and the three applications that have been submitted thus far in 2020. Of the, of the 23 cases that were submitted, 20 of those would meet, would meet at least one of the triggers that were described in the original draft ordinance, that would require them to have that additional meeting. So, 20 of the 23 last applications that were submitted would have to have the additional second The Planning Commission, when this was served by the Planning Commission, they recommended a few changes to the draft ordinance. They did recommend that the additional meeting be applied to all rezonings, text changes to conditional use zoning conditions, and to amendments to the future land use map. This would remove the criteria for the large or impactful projects, and would, again, would be across the board for all projects that are described here. During their discussion of this meeting, there was a motion that was put on the floor for, to have the triggers there, but for those that would be considered not large and impactful, impactful but would smaller, be smaller, would still have to provide the notification that would be limited to 500 feet. However, that motion failed and did not pass, so it remains at the all cases. They would suggested that there be a, or recommended rather, that there be a posting of the property for the meeting, and that there would be a vote taken at the second meeting for any support of the application. These changes are reflected in the recommendation that you have before you, and as you see on the table here, there are, from the original version of the draft ordinance, just a comparative here, there, the triggers have been removed as opposed to what was originally approved, and the, the future land use map amendments are added to that, and the notification would remain at 1,000 feet. Mailing recipients would, again, would be the property owners. With the original proposal, there would be no posting of the property. With the Planning Commission recommendation, there would be, and meeting participant vote, with the original, there would be no vote, and with the proposed, their recommendation by the Planning Commission, there would be a vote. There was also a concern by the Planning Commission that staff attend these meetings and play an active part in their, in the conducting of the meeting, and to be there as a, as a spokesperson for, for any, any type of city issues. That recommendation, the Planning Commission's recommendation with the proposed revisions was recommended by a vote of four to three. Staff is available for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Okay, Counselor.
The slide that showed that 80, so of all the case, the applications that went through last, the last 23, or sorry, last 20 plus three this year, it was 87%, but then it says something down here, 256% increase. That's an increase of what?
Well, properties within 1,000 feet.
What is the increase over?
What would normally be, what would otherwise be required?
Got it. If we noticed 500 feet, it would be 1,500 properties, but noticing 1,000, it's roughly 4,000 properties.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Of that sampling?
Yes, for that same property.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. So, with this additional neighborhood meeting, would it be appropriate for a district counselor to show up and hear what people say?
That may be something that needs to happen.
I'm not sure Mr. Holland could answer that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I can either.
Okay.
I think that's a question really for the council to answer.
Okay. Well, if I could just comment, my plan is to attend these meetings and hear from people, and as Counselor Melton was just asking about, I think this is a big improvement for folks who want the people who are impacted by changes to get notice of what's going on and have an opportunity to voice their concerns. So, I, I'm encouraged by these proposed changes.
May I just address this? So, Counselor Buffkin, I think it's a good idea to show up and hear people's concerns so you're well prepared as the district representative, but I also think it's appropriate...
but I also think it's appropriate not to lead a charge, if you know what I mean. So in other words, you know, you should be there listening, whatnot, and representing, but not advocating one way or another.
Yes, Mayor, that, that point's well-taken, and I'm cognizant that this, this additional meeting happens before the public hearing at planning commission, before the public hearing in front of council, so I agree that at this point, at the point of the additional neighborhood meetings, this is time to be listening, not advocating.
And, you know, there are times when your voice can be very, shall we say, powerful in influencing, say, a developer who wants to, if they're not responding to constituent concerns, certainly appropriate to say, "I'm not supporting this." So, you know, but I just, what I don't want most, well, some of you are new, so going to these meetings and leading the charge is not the role. It's listening and trying to ensure that all sides are working together.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I do have one more, if I may.
Of course.
Could you tell us a little bit more about how posting the subject property works? This is a sign that says a rezoning case is going on. How, how big is it, what's it look like?
I don't know the exact dimensions of the sign, it's basically a three by three, something like that. So it's a fairly substantial sign, plus it'll be, it'll be, yeah, we'll put it on each right-of-way, so.
It's in the UDO, that each sign for a zoning sign is specifically governed in how big it is and what it looks like, and it will be the same ones as you see around now, that size, and it will give all the information about the meeting, so.
All right, so Counselor Branch?
I was going to tell the hearing, and it comes back before I say anything.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna open the hearing then. Raise your hand if you're here to speak, right, if you could come up front.
I have a question after.
Yeah, so if I get this, name, name and address.
Donna Bailey, 710 Rosemont.
Three minutes, yeah.
Actually...
Our common practice has been, always been, for text changes, three minutes per person.
Okay, so if I get this correct, you're gonna send notices to 1,000 feet to the property owners, so the people who actually live there, the residents, if they're renting, they don't have any say, is that correct? I think if you could have staff clarify that. So you're cutting residents, the people who actually live there, and who will be affected by whatever rezoning. And I would also like to bring it to your attention, that it was the CACs that led the charge to get the radius increased from rezonings neighborhoods, neighbors being notified from 100 feet to 500 feet. So I'm very happy to see the 1,000 feet, but with big rezonings, anything five stories or over, rezonings affect a lot more than just the people within 1,000 feet, it all, it changes traffic patterns, so I think in one hand, yes, you're increasing to owners, you're cutting out residents, renters, which again, I thought this council really wanted everybody included, this isn't doing that. So I think you need to somehow make sure residents are included. You mean renters? You mean renters? Renters, yes, not just property owners. I think that was the purpose of the posting recommendation from the planning commission. Okay, but in the, in the text change, it says, "The notices will be sent to property owners." Those are not the renters.
Can I say something?
You know what, let's...
Let them finish.
Yes, let's finish, we'll explain. Okay, so please make sure they're not cut out.
Steph Mandell, 3225 Oak Grove Circle. Before you abolish the CACs, rezoning requests had to have a neighborhood meeting, followed by a presentation at a CAC meeting, and then a vote at a subsequent CAC meeting, a total of three meetings at all, in all, with time in between for dialogue and negotiation. It's truly ironic that staff has had to twist themselves into knots, trying to quickly come up with something in the absence of CACs, and there appears to be no evidence that what they've come up with is an improvement. There will now be two meetings instead of three, so less opportunity for engagement. The applicant will now run and report on the meetings rather than staff. The applicant will now set the meeting dates, times, and venues, rather than being at a standard set date, time, and venue. So while talking about meetings in the evenings, and how is that different from CACs, the meetings will now be at less predictable or familiar dates, times, and places. That's most likely going to have a negative impact on turnout, not to mention that the applicant will now have to incur the expense of procuring meeting space. Only people living within 1,000 feet will be notified, whereas CAC meetings were open to everyone in the CAC's areas, and often courtesy presentations were made to nearby CACs. The previous council changed rules regarding sidewalk projects to allow input from the greater community. This seems to be a step in the opposite direction. You seem to have abolished the CACs because you didn't want to listen to what you thought were the voices of older, wealthy, white homeowners, yet you have no demographic data to back up your assertion. You seem to be ignoring the existence of CACs in predominantly minority communities, and ignoring the participation of renters. Did you know that the Chair of the Glenwood CAC, who is also one of the Vice Chairs of the RCAC, is a renter? Rushing through this text change without facts or data is irresponsible and unnecessary. Bring back the CACs and work with them to improve engagement. I also have an email from Phil Poe, who worked on the UDO advisory group, and he was surprised that he couldn't find this TC on the development activity page of the city's website. He thought it should be published five days after the application is approved, and he, he questions the whole process for how this has been rushed through. So again, I ask you, what's the rush? Why do you have to do this so quickly? Bring back the CACs, let's work to improve them, and let's not cut down the number of meetings, and let's not cut out people from participating.
David Almer, 2105 Cedar Bluff Court. Thank you, this is a move in the right direction. A couple of your CACs, particularly north and northwest, out of the 18 encompassed about 36 percent of the city of Raleigh. They were operating almost like mega HOAs, and you had people who lived nowhere near the property, would have to ask where it was on a map, didn't understand the traffic patterns around it, basically voting no, just because another handful would come out and say they didn't want to deal with more traffic, it didn't fit in with the character of their neighborhood. So letting a smaller group of people adjacent to the property actually have a working relationship with the developer, and talk about the things that would or would not make that property better, is certainly preferable than allowing people to come out from miles and miles away to then talk about, you know, how to keep renters out of an area, how to keep townhomes out of an area. You guys are on the right track, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing, and I, we have several people who have questions, so I'm gonna start with you, Counselor Melton.
This is not a question, it's an issue, I guess, in response to Ms. Bailey's point. I agree that we should be including as many residents as particularly renters. The issue is that our UDO, our code, a separate Article 10.2, which is referenced in the statute, that deals with the, all of the public notice and mail requirements. So it's not just for this procedure, it's all of our procedures, that this code says property owners. And so you'll notice even the planning commission recommended changes still say property owners. It's an issue that's greater than just this text change. So I think that we need to be looking at it as a separate issue. I think it is extremely important that we look at options for including residents and renters in our city decision-making. And so that may be a separate code or text change that we need to look at. So what I would like to do for this issue, aside from what we're talking about during this public hearing, is I would like to, one, the consultant that we are hiring, have them look at it, and work with the city attorney's office to see the feasibility of changing this separate code provision that's getting triggered here, and gets triggered in other places, to include renters and more of the residential addresses. So I'd like to, I'd like to refer that to the city attorney's office, and to work with the, with the consultant.
And also probably do a study, so we understand the financial implications, the, you know, all of that. So what you're asking then is the city attorney head up some type of study on this issue?
Yes, 'cause I think it is important, yes. It is important to include renters and as many residents as possible, and that is a whole separate issue from this text change. So I ask that we, that we authorize city attorney's office to engage in that work.
I agree.
I moved, I moved to authorize city attorney's office to engage.
You're referring it.
I'm referring it, yes.
And are we all good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I had just one other thing.
Yes.
This is probably the last thing I say. The recommendation by the planning commission to post in the subject property, I think in the interim, that's a, that's a great idea. That way, folks who are not getting the mailing know that there's a meeting. I think that mailing to the 1,000 feet and putting the, the, the sign on the property is probably going to bring more awareness to these meetings than we've had in the past. I'd also note that nowhere in our code, UDO or otherwise, required a CAC meeting, one or two. So this is the first time ever in our code that we're requiring this additional neighborhood meeting, so I think that is also a step in the right direction. I do not support the idea of there being a vote at this meeting. I think written recommendations or concerns are important, so we understand what the folks who showed up, what they were concerned about. They were concerned about traffic, or noise, or height, or stormwater runoff, that's important. Gathering feedback is important. I think solution-oriented feedback is what we should be aiming for. If we're gonna require a vote, then the prior task force recommendation of doing more of a tally, I support that. If 40 people show up and 10 are concerned about traffic, if that gets recorded. But a simple yes or no vote, I do not believe is solution-oriented feedback. I think it sets up a fight, and that's not the intent of these meetings.
Okay, thank you. I think Counselors, well, okay, you're good, all right, Counselor Stewart?
So I kinda wanna remind us that out of the work of past councils, including the 2015-2017 council that set up the citizen engagement task force, this was actually one of the recommendations that came out of that body, and I think it's a really good one, it's been hashed out for quite some time, and just now picked back up, to Mel, to Council Member Melton's point. To your point...
That's okay, Counselor Nicole.
That's right, that's right, see? Yes. And to your point about this being the first time that we're putting this, this neighborhood meeting in code is really important, I think the idea that we are actually noticing people who live next to, adjacent to the project is extremely important, and that we're doing so to 1,000 feet of those property owners, that we are doing this for what seems like will be 85 percent of our rezonings, by going into large and impactful projects, I think is also a huge improvement. And so what I am really interested in doing is looking at the original version that we were considering, and then adding in the posting, which was recommended by the planning commission. I think that's a great way to get at, making sure everybody knows in the meantime, while we dig into and study the, how we get to renters more. So I have, in case it's helpful, the original ordinance, which includes a red added line about the property shall be posted in accordance with another general statute in our code. Just hope it's helpful. Nothing? So nothing new, but just rather that language noting, planning commission's recommendation on having a posting is on page two.
So Counselor Stewart, the posting then would be done in accordance with the code, so I'm trying to remember, that something like, at least 10 days before a meeting, and no more than 20, 30, or 20?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Right, that's the same notice and posting and mailing that everything standard in the code is done, which is also consistent with state law on zoning notice, which is...
Okay, so that way, somebody couldn't put this up on a Friday and the meeting's Monday.
Correct. And it also has the size of the sign, and, and it's consistent with, again, what you're seeing now with signs.
That's also Section 10.2, which is the one that talks about the, where that property owners' languages.
Okay. Now, this does not take into account that staff participation in a meeting, I guess that would be like a policy versus whatnot, so would staff then come back to us with some recommendations on what their role would be, or do we need to provide staff with some feedback on what we feel their role would be?
Let me try a version of that. Staff can come back with some guidelines, I think it would be help at a, help to know at a concept level what role you wish staff to play. And there's obviously a wide range of that. Staff could attend and simply be in a more passive role, and only answer questions, all the way to staff actually facilitates and leads the meeting. There are pros and cons of those two ends of the spectrum, but that's the range. I think the staff is ready and able to serve in a role associated with the meeting, but we do need policy direction about the role you wish to play, and then I think, not speaking for planning and development staff, I think then they could come back and say, "Here's how we would design that." But at a concept level, it would help to get your direction.
Okay, I saw some shaking of the heads like this on the latter, meaning staff run this meeting. My suggestion would be that staff be there to answer questions, respond to inquiries, make sure that all city ordinances and rules are being followed, making sure that somebody's not saying one thing that's incorrect, somebody else is saying so.
And that is, and that's been the practice, even when they were going to the CACs, that they would go and answer questions, because the CACs were ran by the Chair of that CAC. So I think, you know, whenever a zoning case come out, everything that you're stating there, I think is a continuation of staff being there to make sure, and also just be honest, to make sure we hold everyone accountable on, on the policies. Not all developers are created equal.
And to the accountability, would, I, I think it should be staff that's reporting the feedback to planning commission, I, I think that that would be...
So a staff report as well.
Well, I think that the text change anticipates a, a report to planning commission, I just think we should be clear that it's not the developer making that report to planning commission, it would be a neutral third party, the staff.
Well, no, the developer would be, but then there could be a staff report, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yes, I think it's important to make sure that true, not that anyone would lie, but that true and accurate feedback is being reported out.
I think the ordinance says, and Travis, that the developer and the attendees will send it to planning, and planning will post it, and then, I guess, include whatever their analysis of it is in the staff report. So you'll have the benefit, not only, I think, of the analysis of the staff, but the actual comments and report as backup materials.
Okay. So far, what we said, does that give staff enough feedback to move forward with a policy that they can bring to us?
One, one thing, Madam Mayor.
All right, we, we've got nods, so, good.
One thing I want to mention, I had a meeting yesterday about a zoning case, and because of the location of some properties, when you do the 1,000 feet, you might hit the edge of, say, of a HOA, and it may only pull in two homes. So, but that HOA, those two homes are still within that 1,000 feet. I was wondering if one thing we can, in addition to the 1,000 feet, if there's an HOA sending one letter to that HOA, so that they're aware of this zoning case, and then it's up to the HOA to, no, notification to have comments if they need people at that meeting. So I wanted, this came up again in the conversation, hold on one second, 'cause you're, you're doing this.
Sorry.
This, this came up in the conversation again, that I had yesterday on a, on a different zoning case, and that's why I wanted to mention it.
So I think we've, I think that's a really important point, I also think there are other neighborhood associations that will be interested in learning about these.
Right.
If folks are okay for the sake of making sure we have something moving forward from today, I would like to keep this ordinance, as we've got it right in front of us now, and then take into, also send to the consultant ideas like this, ideas like reaching out to renters, figuring out how else to do community engagement around planning projects.
Right.
And send that to them, so that we can keep adding on to this process, but for today, let's...
Yeah, that's fair, I just want to make sure I mentioned it, because it came up again in the conversation that I had just yesterday.
Awesome.
So that's why I wanted to mention it.
Okay. So Counselor Stewart, is this a motion?
This is a motion, and we have a proposed consistency... This is a motion, and we have a proposed consistency statement, is that correct?
Oh, look at that. We have what?
A proposed consistency statement. Do I need to add in the amendment?
Yeah, I would say that, I'm going to let you read the consistency statement, but you're, the ordinance that you're moving to approve is the one that was originally before council and sent to Planning Commission with the amendment that the posting language recommended by the Planning Commission be added to that ordinance.
So that, plus, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement?
That's the ordinance that you're referencing.
That is the ordinance I'm referencing. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated March 3, 2020, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning text amendment that was just wonderfully laid out by Ms. Corin.
Second.
Counselor Knight, you have one question?
Question of staff, please. I had a question raised with me, who wants to? Question raised with me about the, the waiting period of 30 days under two, I'm sorry, D2B. The rationale behind that, once the application's complete, there's no, no earlier than 30 days following that the meeting will be held, is there, what's the reasoning behind that?
Well, so that they, they're not holding, they're not submitting an application, then two days later, having a second meeting without, without giving staff a chance to review the application, and really, you know, that's really the main reason. Just as we're not having two meetings really close together, where it really doesn't, really more like one meeting as opposed to two individual meetings.
It gives us step time.
I wonder if it should be more based on when the application is considered complete than when it's submitted.
Well, that's what, what it says is it's, it's when it is complete, but it can never be less than 30 days. And I think that most applications, it's my understanding, are not complete in 30 days. Is that correct? Travis is the, wow, the main architect of this, although we all sort of try to put our heads together.
I don't know how to sell it that way, but, so the, I'll answer the first question first. The 30-day spacing was just to create distance between the pre-application neighborhood meeting and the second one. So the pre-application meeting can happen as late as the day before a submittal comes in the door. So it was, again, just to create distance between those two meetings. An application is reviewed for completeness by staff. I won't say that most of them are not complete when they come in the door, but there are instances where staff ask for additional information to make the application more complete, if you will. Does that make sense?
Yes. Just the basis is on the submittal date as opposed to when it's deemed complete. It seemed like it would be, you'd be basing it on when the staff says it's complete, and then give them two weeks or three weeks.
Sure, and completeness is a term that we use in the code intentionally. It starts a clock, if you will. Once an application is deemed complete, we as a staff have 45 days to deliver that complete application to the Planning Commission.
May I ask a follow-up? I think maybe it would help with what you're getting at. So my assumption has been that in between the first meeting and the second meeting, people are going to be talking about their concerns, the developer's going to be offering conditions, there's going to be a little bit of give and take between the community and the project owner. Is, am I correct in that assumption? Is that what we're expecting is going to happen between these two neighborhood meetings?
Well, typically, when, when we get an application in, the, the conditions are already set for, for what they want to see. I mean, there could be revisions to those conditions that result from the neighborhood meetings, and, you know, these are all occurring before we go to the Planning Commission. So if there are changes that are agreed upon between the developer, applicant, and, and the community, and they want to make changes to those, as long as we get those within the, you know, 10 days before the Planning Commission, and we can get those in the, in the staff report, then that's what we, we will present to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes 7 to 1. Okay. Since there are no other matters on our agenda, we will now adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for attending.